December 4th, City Council Meeting. If you join me for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Ms. Rolofsky, roll call, please.
Michelle Volk.
Here.
Lou Kellier.
Here.
John Bermal.
Here.
Dan Walter.
Joshua Lee.
Here.
Okay, moving on to item number three, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for folks in this community to share thoughts and concerns up to three minutes on items not on the agenda. If you're here for that, you can raise. All right, moving on to item number four, additional agenda information. Mr. Miller.
Mayor, the only item tonight, item nine A, is on our new business. This is put there by mistake. This is typically a consent item. And so if it's all right with the council, we would ask that you do a revised agenda with items six A through letter M, as in mother, for the approval of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion for that? Oh, okay.
Yeah, John.
I'd like to make a motion that we move item nine A into the consent agenda as item M.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion about adjusting the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post.
All right, it prevails. Move that up. All right, moving on to item five, Fire Department Presentation of the Badge. And I'll turn it over to our chief, Mike Meyer. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing the Class of 2021 Rookie Group on the successful completion of their two-year probationary period with the Lakeville Fire Department. And I asked them to join me up front, and I will name off their names as they come forward. So if I can have the rookie class of 21 and your family members that'll pin your badge, please come forward. We have Ben Fleischer, Ashley Hillier, Art Weiss. Station two is Caitlin Richard. From station three is Blake Rundow, Joe Tomes, and then station four is Megan Conradz and Anthony Tyson. And as they filter forward here, just, so their successful completion of probation involves two years of service with the Fire Department. Most of that time is spent in their initial training, so they get their certification as EMR medical training, their Fire One, Fire Two state certification, and their hazmat operations. And then we do some internal training as far as drivers' training, water rescue training, other things that pertain to strictly the Fire Department. In total, that equates to about 450 hours of training that they complete in that two-year window to get to this point. So their actual two-year mark was in August, but we wait until December to get everything aligned and then give them an opportunity to get family here to pin their badges. So with that, I'm going to administer an oath of office, and then their family member will pin their badge after we complete the oath. So, the test, final test for you. Raise your right hand. I state your name. You solemnly swear. Port the Constitution of the United States. And faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter of the City of Lakeville in the County of Dakota and State of Minnesota to the best of my judgment and abilities, so help me God. Congratulations, families. You can pin your firefighter's badge on. Truly the final test. Nicely done. Congratulations. And the council would like to shake your hands, so if you could. I would ask if they want to talk, but I know the answer to that right now.
Counsel, any comments? John?
I would just want to say congratulations, listening to what you've been through to get to this point. It's impressive. It shows commitment to your community, and I really want the community to understand when with the Fire Department that this is a deep sense of commitment. These people pour into their entire life 24/7 to serve the community. So thank you so much for your commitment to our community, and congratulations again.
Well, the nice thing about this evening is that we get to see your families, and I want to extend a thank you to the families who will be supporting the firefighters through this career. What an impressive class. You're joining an impressive group of people here, and I know it's not, it's not just about firefighting, it's about engagement with the community, education, and you're all the things. So thank you so much for your dedication and welcome. Congrats.
Well, just on behalf of the community, I want to thank you again, as Joshua and John mentioned, both you and your families, and we look forward to working with you over the coming years. So again, thank you for willing to step up and serve our city. We'll take a brief break, so you guys can go out and take photos with family, so don't feel like you need to be quiet or stay.
Allowing us the evening.
Thank you, chief. Thanks again, you guys.
Good to see everybody.
All right, we'll now move on to, uh... Item six, our consent agenda. Any items you wanted to highlight, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just two items of note. Item six E is a consultant contract for design of a Crystal Lake Sanitary Sewer Lift Station. I bring this up because it was discussed last week or last meeting during the Sundance Discussion. And then item six K is a resolution approving charitable gambling license for Lakeville Hockey Association, and this is in affiliation with their Hockey Day in Lakeville that's coming up.
Okay.
And then I should, also, Mayor, I should recognize items, the new item six M, it's a resolution accepting donations to the Lakeville Police Department and the Fire Department, and those are coming from the Lakeville Public Safety Foundation, and we're very thankful for those donations.
Fantastic, thank you to them. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion about the consent agenda? Okay, because these are routine matters, we'll have a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post. Consent agenda passes. We'll now move on to seven A, our public hearing and the adoption of a ski fee schedule by ordinance, and our Finance Director, Ms. Stahl, is going to present. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. State law does require that the establishment or modification of our fees that process land use applications must be established by ordinance after a public hearing is conducted. The fee schedule is reviewed annually and to ensure that rate structures accurately reflect cost of services provided, the proposed 2024 budget, anticipated adjustments of certain fees. The proposed changes are consistent with the discussions discussed at the work session that we had on October 23rd with the council. So some items of note, which are basically new fees in the fee, 2024 fee schedule, engineering has an as-built update fee. This is for both the developer and city-installed public improvements. Right now, the developer agreements have 8.5% security built into the contracts. This fee would be for actual costs that exceed the security. In general government, we have a $3 online permit application fee. This will become effective when we implement the new ERP system, which is scheduled to be in the fall of 2024. And then we're also, the Dakota County has a special assessment maintenance fee of $6 per assessment. The city used to absorb that fee. We're going to pass that along into the properties that are assessed. Parks and Recreation, with the Antlers Park, the new pavilion and additional shelters, and the Ed Mago ELC space, we needed to have more detailed rental fee structures for those items. We also added in planning and zoning an annexation application fee that is added to recover the cost of staff time spent. Utility rates, the waters and sewer rates are set to be increased 3%, and there's no rate increases for the streetlight or the environmental resource fees. And then all fees associated with city staff time have been adjusted for the cost of living adjustments that we have in the budget. So after the public hearing, approval of the ordinance will result in the approval of the changes for permits, planning and engineering fees, connection charges, and other development fees. Approval of the summary publication of the ordinance does require a four-fifths approval. Approval of the resolution will result in the revisions to and approval of the schedule of fees with the effective date of January 1st, 2024. With that, I'll open up or ask for the public hearing to be opened.
Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, this is a public hearing. If anybody here has comments related to the fee schedule, join us up. Have anybody online? Joshua?
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay, public hearing is now closed. Any other thing else to highlight? Okay, if not, I will take a motion.
I move to approve the ordinance adopting fees and summary publication of the ordinance, and I move to approve the resolution adopting a fee schedule.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, and any further discussion about the motion? If not, I'll take the roll call.
Volk.
Aye.
Hillier.
Aye.
Bermal.
Aye.
Walter.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Very good, adopted fee schedule. Move on to item B, public budget meeting, our truth in taxation for the 2024 property tax levy and 24 budget, and Ms. Stahl will present on that as well.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. First off, I want to extend a thank you to all the department directors, the supervisors, and the staff, Administrator Miller, and the finance staff for the time and effort that they put into preparing this budget, is a lot of hours. And thank you also to the City Council for your time in reviewing and discussing and providing your thoughtful feedback with it. We start the process in May, and it's hard to believe that it takes that long, but it does. We're going through a lot of detail. Culminates throughout the summer, we're working with staff, going through their budget needs and meeting the needs of our growing community. August, we have our first work session with the council. September, we adopt the preliminary levy and then have more work sessions with council to determine, can we, can we cut any place? Can we, what do we need to do to make this the best budget ever? So that then brings us, and that is actually, that September levy is what is the numbers that are produced with the tax property statements that are mailed out to homeowners and businesses. So with that, we are tonight then presenting the truth in taxation meeting, and then from here, we will be adopting these, hopefully. So with our 2024 budget, our tax levies, excuse me, we are asking for a levy of $43,596,800, and that is for several funds. This is a 9.62% increase from the 2023 levy. It's a little bit less than what we had at the preliminary levy. Our preliminary levy in September was a 10.84%. So we brought it, we were able to bring it down a bit, and this is a $3.8 million increase from 2023 levy. And this does provide the funding for our operations, capital, maintenance, and debt service. Breaking down the tax levy for our general fund, we have $29,509,650. Our pavement management fund will get $1.8 million. Our park improvement fund, $350,000. Our trail improvement fund, $400,000. Our main debt service funds, $9.7 million roughly. And then the debt service that's associated with the park referendum bonds that were passed, the referendum that passed in November of 2021, this year's levy is $1,781,000. So that brings our total to the $43,597.
Sorry to interrupt you for a minute.
Sure.
Do you know off the top of your head what the percentage of the levy, the debt, specifically for parks, and then the overall debt is?
It's 2.11% of the 9.62% increase.
Got it.
We are also, so just making sure, noting that we're using general fund reserves and some public safety one-time aid money that we're going to get here at the end of December to mitigate these tax pressures that we're having with the vehicle and equipment items. We're using some of that money to, the public safety money, to help that fund along as well. So the 2024 tax levy, we have seen, as you know, community growth and new construction alone, $394 million for this most recent year, or 3.5%. This generates roughly $1.1 million or $1.2 million in property taxes. Now, looking at the market value of the new construction, you can see what it's done over these last 12, 14, 15 years. It's really showing the growth of the community, and so even with last year, we were at $392 million, just in the new construction market value, and now we're at the $394. And just to note that the new construction, in the graph, you see $291,000 for new construction market value was 2022, and in 2021, that was $221 million. So nice growth as Lakeville continues to get bigger. When we look at the breakdown of the new construction market values, you can see how the personal, mostly it's residential, that's seen a large amount of growth from 2013 to 2024. There's been a little bit of shift with the industrial, 2023 was the largest growth in that area. We've dipped a little bit in 2024's market values for that new construction, as we've seen development just slow down a bit. And looking at our tax capacity rates with the growth, the highest the City of Lakeville has had was back in 2013, 0.41% or 41%. We are, with our growth in the tax base, absorbing these, the levy dollars that we're levying. So last year, we had the all-time low of 0.2967 tax rate, and this year, we're up just a tad bit with a 0.30187%. So it is a 1.7% tax rate increase. And looking at what that impact means for the homeowners, the median valued home, which in Lakeville right now is 446,500, it's an $82 annual increase on the city portion of their taxes. For a $1 million commercial property that sees the 11% valuation increase, for that particular property, it would be a $762 annual increase for the city's portion. Breaking down the general fund revenues by source, you can see that property taxes are our largest revenue source at 72%. So roughly 20, 30 million in property taxes. That includes also manufactured homes taxes. It's not just the levy, there's delinquent taxes in there, there's fiscal disparities, all this make up that total. And then breaking down the other revenue sources that help balance the budget, we have license and permits are 8% or $3.2 million, and our governmental money is $1.6 million at 4%. Charges for services is 8% at $3 million. Court fines, investment income, and some other miscellaneous revenues are roughly $600,000 or 1%. We've got transfers in from other funds of 1 point, roughly 1.3 million or 3%. And the use of general fund reserves of 1.5 million or 4%. In breaking down that use of the general fund reserves, we are proposing to transfer $215,000 to our technology fund. We've also got several one-time expenditures hitting this year, $420,000 for our finance and HR and community development ERP software implementation. It's a big-ticket item, and it's going to be a time commitment as well that staff has been working on and will continue to work on that. The elections, this is a way to, using fund balance to even out the fact that elections cost hit every other year. So we are also doing the market study through HR that was carryforward from 2023 budget. We have our, actually, and this is recognizing that the development revenues have leveled off and not as robust as they were, that's recognizing a $530,000 reduction in revenues that we're planning to use the fund balance to help this blip in that revenue source. We have one-time capital outlays of $72,000, and then also roughly $190,000 additional use of reserves to help moderate the tax levy increase. Looking at our general fund ratio, this is our reserve balance. The policy is to have between 40 and 50%. This shows where our general fund of 40 to 50% of the next year's expenditures. So as we continue to grow, there's larger dollar amounts that we're getting to meet with that 40 to 50%. And this chart is showing across the years where that fund balance has been. There's been, last year, we were above the target range again, and we're able to transfer out some of those funds to help offset and keep down the levy in those, in some other capital improvement funds. We're projected to be at the end of 2023 just above the fund ratio, so we'll be at 52%, and that's where we're offering up to use the 1.5 million. We'll still be within our projected, or our policy range, so we're projecting to be at 47% at the end of 2024. Breaking down the general fund expenses by function, so our total expenditure is roughly $41 million. Public safety is the largest portion of that at 46%, so $19 million. Breaking that down further into police, they're at $15.6 million, and fire is at $3.5 million. Then going clockwise around the chart, pie chart, the public works is 17% of our budget at $6.9 million. General government is at $9 million, roughly 22%. Parks and Recreation, $5.8 million at 14%. And then we've got transfers out in contingency, making up that last 1%. We are proposing in the budget, new positions. So we are proposing six new full-time firefighters as the city moves toward the full-time model and have a blended model of duty crew and full-time, getting away from the paid-on-call. And we have four police officers that are being added. We're adding one Streets Maintenance One and a Streets Maintenance Two person staff, and then in the utility funds, adding a Maintenance One as well. So other funds that I've noted before, also the software ERP implementation, that's, it's a large dollar amount going out in 2024. We did build in the 3% cost of living increases for the non-union, and then we've also got the union's wage contract changes, which have just been negotiated, so that is built in. Looking at the utility funds, what's included in there, we've got the 2024 Street Reconstruction Project, some ongoing major maintenance, a full year of our new four-tier water structure, no new debt in utilities, that's wonderful news, and then adding that one utility maintenance one position. For the liquor fund, very healthy, it's doing great. Kia Cook is in its third full year. We are budgeting more sales increases again for 2024. The liquor fund does include the debt for the Kia Cook and Galaxy. Kia Cook is roughly $350,000 a year, and then Galaxy's debt is $288,000 a year. And the liquor fund, because of how well it does, is able to transfer out and help support our other city functions, transferring out $1.58 million, making up that $1.58 million for 2024. The liquor fund is doing a transfer out to the debt service fund for the police station bonds of $400,000. Those bonds are set to end in 2032. The debt service fund, as I mentioned, for the Kia Cook of $350,000. It's also going to transfer out equipment replacement money of $500,000 to the equipment fund, support to the general fund for administration, technology, things that the liquor fund enjoys the benefit of using those costs of $239,000. And then transferring out roughly $60,000 to the technology fund, and then also the fireworks $30,000 donation for the Panaprog. So there's several factors that impact everyone's property taxes. There's changes to the city's tax levy, there's changes with the counties and with the school districts, and then those other special districts that you see at the bottom of your property tax statements. The changes to your market value when you're looking at the property statement, the value is as of January 2nd of 2023. What that's based on is a sales period from October 2021 to September 2022. And if you remember how low interest rates were, sales were going gangbusters. So what we're looking at, the median valued home is going up 4.18%. So the factors that are impacting our property taxes here in Lakeville, the market value, changes to the market value for the city, so overall, there's a 4.9% valuation increase for our whole tax base, 3.5% new construction, as mentioned before, coming to an 8.3% total. And there's always legislative changes to different things, some, you know, last year, there were some, there's changes coming up in 2024. All those affect how these property taxes will be spread out. So with that, I'll ask or put up for any questions?
Okay, any questions? Okay, if not, this is a public hearing, so I'll turn off. If anybody has any comments about the budget, you can come on up and share your thoughts. Okay, seeing none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any, sorry, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, it's closed. Any other comments about, questions about the voter? Joshua?
No questions. I mean, whenever we get to this point in the season, it's at times strange not to have questions, because there's so much that's being presented. But we've also had several iterations presented over time, so I just wanted to acknowledge and reiterate my thanks to you and the team for coming back, being able to bring that levy down a bit from the initial preliminary budget. It's always helpful, particularly when folks are always concerned about the increases and the cost of living in general. So I think that the whole staff team has done a really good job of being good stewards of the funds that we're needing to operate the city, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'll just echo some of Councilman Lee's comments, in particular, thanks to you and your budget heads to put us together and for Mr. Miller's guidance. And I think, you know, this budget is responsible, I think it's efficient, I think, one thing to know, if you look at some of our neighboring cities, if you take out the voter-approved parks referendum, we're basically in line with neighboring communities, so it just shows how difficult the broader economy is on the cost of just doing business. And so this is the world we're in at the moment. So again, thank you for that, and I will take a motion to approve the budget.
And there's, and there's, excuse me, Mayor, there are actually four resolutions that we need approval on, so if we could
Okay, I see three.
The tax levy, the budget, there's an authorization to purchase disposable vehicles, and then authorization to order police and fire. Oh, is...
Yeah, we have, we just have, yes.
Oh, the purchase and disposal are one.
Are one.
All right, just not have the last one on there of the authorization to order police and fire.
Our package just says authorize in the 24 purchase and disposal vehicles and equipment.
Okay.
Does it need to be separate?
We'll get that other one on the December 18th meeting.
Okay, all right, good to know.
Is, okay, let me see.
There's four separate resolutions.
Got it. Yes. Right, yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Same thing, okay.
All right, move to approve three resolutions. One, adopting the 2024 property tax levy. Two, adopting the 2024 budget. And three, authorizing the 2024 purchase and disposal of vehicles and equipment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion about the motion and the budget? All right, seeing none, roll call, please.
Hellier?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Very good. We'll now move on to item C, public hearing for Ipava Avenue and Indiana Avenue improvements, and we'll turn over to Mr. Johnson, our engineer.
Good morning, Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight, there's a public hearing for a proposed 2024 improvement. This is an annual project that we do each year, but I'll give you an update on this year's. So this year's project that we're here today, this is the first of two public hearings. This is the improvement hearing. This is for Ipava Avenue between 185th Street and Indiana Avenue, and then also, whoops, and then also Indiana Avenue between Ipava and Dodd. This is part of our pavement management program. If you remember, we have two components. The first is kind of pavement management and maintenance, in which we do our crack ceiling and some of those routine maintenances, those that try to preserve our existing infrastructure assets. The second component of that is our rehabilitation program, and that's for the collector roads and the local roads, where the roadway gets to a point where the cost benefit of the routine maintenance is exceeded and/or if we've reached the end of the useful life of those roadway assets. So in tonight's particular case, we'll see we have a little bit of both. Looking at our OCI, Ipava Avenue is at about a 43, that's identifying the need to be reconstructed. Indiana is at a 62, and that's demonstrated a need to just kind of have that life extended. A brief project background, on August 21st, the city council authorized the preparation of the feasibility report. About a month ago, on November 6th, we received the feasibility report and called the public hearing, and tonight is, again, the first of those two hearings. With the project, we will do two things. Ipava Avenue will do pavement reclamation, that's grinding the existing pavement, and then creating a new patrimony surface. With that, we take the opportunity to replace any curb that is structurally deficient. On Indiana Avenue, that has a little bit higher OCI, we'll do a pavement preservation project, which is basically taking off a little bit of that patrimony surface and then replacing it with brand-new. We'll also take an opportunity to address some drainage issues as well, if there's some catch basins that have some inflow and filtration or any other minor repairs. With the reclamation project only, when we're digging and excavating within the roadway, also take that opportunity to improve our utility system. So as we do each year, we'll work on the water distribution system by putting in corrosion protection and making any minor adjustment to any gate valves and hydrants, and then we'll also do the same with any sanitary sewer manholes. Project financing for city project 2403 is listed in front of you. Its funding sources are combined with property taxes, assessments, water operating fund, sanitary sewer fund, operating fund, and then trail improvement fund, for an estimated total project cost of about 2.25 million. City does have an existing policy for roadway rehabilitation projects. Properties that are benefiting from the improvements are assessed. In this particular case, we do that only for the pavement reclamation projects, so that's Ipava Avenue. The rehabilitation along Indiana Avenue is not assessed, so this public hearing will only be for Ipava Avenue. The street and storm sewer project costs are assessed at 40%, and the utilities and the trail improvements are not assessed. Per our policy, we assess on a per-unit basis for single-family homes and then commercial, industrial, institutional land uses. We assess those on a per-foot basis. Those lots that are on the corner are only assessed once, and that's based upon a number of criteria. In this particular case, this project, we have only one assessed parcel located at the southeast corner of Ipava Avenue and 185th Street, that's Century Middle School. The feasibility report identified a street and storm sewer assessment estimated cost at $43.64 per foot. However, the final assessment amounts will be actually calculated based upon the as-bid construction costs that we will have better information on next, or this, in a couple of months. The assessments will be considered at a second public hearing, that's the assessment hearing, tentatively scheduled for April 3rd, 2024. So just a summary of where we're at tonight, it is a public hearing following this presentation, and then the council will have the opportunity to order the project improvements. That does require a four-fifths vote. If that moves forward, we will target opening bids and competing assessments at the end of February. We'll declare costs and set a second date for that public hearing in March, and then if everything goes well, we'll schedule that, we'll have that public hearing, and then award a construction contract in the first meeting in April, with construction scheduled to begin spring, summer, and complete in the fall. With that, I stand for any questions?
Okay, any questions or comments? Joshua?
I have one question about Indiana Avenue. I have had concerns about the trails on Indiana, or will that be a part of the reconstruction project, is repaving some of those adjacent trails?
Yeah, we're working with the, Councilmember Releas, we're working with the Parks Department to take a look at those needs, and I can follow up with you afterwards.
Good, thank you. This is a public hearing, and so I'll now open that if there's any public comment about the project. You can come on up if you want.
I'm just curious if, what he proposed, if that's in the 2024 budget?
Yes, right.
It is, okay. All right, so it's part of the street improvements? Okay, so it's already budgeted?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor, in response to the question, this is in the proposed budget.
Okay, very good. Any further comment? Doesn't look like they'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alls in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
It's closed. Any further comments about the project? If not, I will take a motion. Joshua?
Move to approve a resolution ordering the improvements and authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications for Ipava Avenue and Indiana Avenue improvements, city project 24-03.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, very good. With that, I will take, sorry, any further discussion? Okay, with that, I'll take a roll call, please.
Bermal?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Hellier?
Aye.
Very good. Motion prevails. We'll now move on to item eight and nine, unfinished and new business. I don't believe that there's any, and then moving on to announcements, our next work session is next week on December 11th, so we moved that up because it would have fallen on Christmas Day. Our next regular meeting is December 18th here at City Hall. Okay, very good. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor, say aye. We're adjourned.